Hello, everyone. The time is now seven thirty-two P M with a quorum present. Good evening and welcome to the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four Prince George's County Board of Education Virtual Special Board Meeting. This is the second meeting of the same session that began July first, twenty twenty-four, called for the purpose of determining the succession to the chair. Ms. Barton, please call the roll.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Dr. Harris. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Murray. Ms. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Django.
Here.
Can you call the ones that didn't answer the first time? A couple of people joined. Thank you so much, Ms. Barton.
Dr. Harris.
Present.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Murray.
Thank you. If you wanted to give the total that you counted, thank you so much.
Total of eight.
Eight? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Um, I didn't see Dr. Miller or, yep, perfect. Uh, thank you so much, Ms. Barton. The chair reminds everyone to ensure that their wireless communication devices are turned off to avoid any technical interference with the taping of this meeting. To hear the meeting interpreted live in Spanish, please click the globe at the bottom of the screen. Ms. Maritza, Marita, please make this announcement in Spanish.
Si gustaria escuchar este mensaje simultaneamente en español. Por favor, presione el globo abajo en su pantalla.
For those who are, uh, thank you so much, Ms. Maritza. For those who are unable to observe live, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Good evening, board colleagues, PGCPS administration, and members of the public. The chair is calling this special meeting at the direction of the board members who voted on July first to call a second meeting to determine the succession of the chair. The purpose of this meeting remains to determine who will succeed to chair until December second, twenty twenty-four. The chair will share with the public why we are voting for the chair of the Board of Education as there have been several inquiries since the July first, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Policy ninety-two twenty states, "In the absence of the chair, the vice chair shall perform the duties ordinarily assigned to the chair." Board members have differing interpretations of the word "absence", further creating the ambiguity in interpretation. On July first, the question was asked of the board, "Shall we elect a chair for the remainder of the term that ends on December fifth, twenty twenty-four?" The motion was adopted. We will continue with that vote from July first, twenty twenty-four. Board member Briggs, will you please lead us in the board prayer?
Yes, if you can give me one second to pull that board prayer up, I will.
No problem.
Lead us in that. Okay. Um, "O God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being mindful of your guidance steers to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen."
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Briggs. The chair reminds the members of the Internet Standing Rules adopted at the first meeting of the session remain in effect throughout this session. Standing rules were, "Members shall keep their video on and remain on camera at all times; keep their microphone on mute until recognized by the chair; raise their hand icon and wait to be recognized by the chair; unmute their microphone to speak and mute it when done speaking. Members may speak twice on any motion for two minutes." Thank you so much, colleagues. Are there any corrections to the July first, twenty twenty-four special virtual meeting minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes are approved. Did I miss anybody saying? Okay. We will continue with the ballots for chair of the board. At the adjournment of the July first meeting, the board had completed two rounds of voting, each ending in a tie vote, five and five. There were five votes for each nominee. The two nominees' names are Lolita E. Walker and Brandon D. Jackson. The body will continue to vote by roll call, whereby, when your name is called, you will state the name of the nominee of choice with your corresponding "yay". This is the same method as voted on in the July first meeting. I just looked over to see if any hands were being raised, okay? Mr. Fitzpatrick, then we will go ahead and call the roll. I didn't see anybody's hands raised. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Are we gonna say the name or we have to say the name?
You can say the name followed by "yay".
Brandon Jackson, yay.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Uh, Lolita E. Walker, yay.
Mr. Briggs.
Brandon Jackson, yay.
Dr. Harris.
Lolita Walker, yay.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Um, instead of going five-five again, uh, for the sake of unity on the board, um, I'm going to concede my candidacy. Uh, so I'll be voting for Lolita Walker to move forward. Hopefully, that'll help us bring this board together.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Lolita E. Walker, yay.
Dr. Miller. Mr. Murray.
Brandon Jackson, yes.
Mr. Django.
Brandon Jackson, yes.
Ms. Walker.
Lolita E. Walker, yes. Remember.
There are.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There are six votes for Lolita E. Walker and four votes for Brandon Jackson.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Member Lolita E. Walker received six votes. Member Brandon D. Jackson received four votes. The chair.
The chair declares.
Yes, I am trying to, um, I'm so sorry. The chair declares Lolita E. Walker the, um, Chair of the Board of Education. Thank you so much. And I just saw, um, Shayla Adams Stafford's hand up. Board member Adam Stafford.
Um, no, are we into the vice chair?
Okay, you didn't have a question right now? Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you to my colleagues for electing me Chair of the Board of Education for Prince George's County. Consequently, I hereby resign from the vice chair position that I was holding. The vice chair of the Board of Education for Prince George's County is now vacant. We shall now elect a vice chair to serve in the role until December second, twenty twenty-four. The chair reminds the members, with there being ten members, the vote necessary for election is six or more, a majority of our board. With more than two candidates on a small board, it will be difficult to obtain a majority vote. Nominations are open for the vice chair. Um, Board member Adam Stafford, I saw your name first.
Um, I like to nominate Brandon Jackson for vice chair.
Thank you. Brandon Jackson is nominated for vice chair. Um, Ms. LaSalle Frazier, I see your hands.
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Kenneth Harris for vice chair.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Kenneth Harris is nominated for vice chair. Um, Mr. Django, did you have your hand up?
Uh, they were, um, the person that got nominated already nominated.
Oh, thank you so much. There, are there any additional names to be added to the position of vice chair for the Board of Education? Ms. Adam Stafford, your hand is still up. Okay. There being no other names, nominations are now closed. The two candidates for vice chair nominations are Board member Brandon D. Jackson and Dr. Kenneth Harris. Nominees will now have the opportunity to give a two-minute speech to your colleagues as we did in our last meeting, and we will first go with Mr. Brandon Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the, um, opportunity. Um, I conceded as chair, um, so I want to run for vice chair for all of the same reasons I wanted to run for chair. Um, I conceded as, uh, my candidacy as a chair, uh, because I think that going five and five for multiple rounds will only give a block out of Prince George's County. Um, I want us to be able to operate on one court, um, in unity. Uh, so I think that, you know, having, you know, two different opinions or two different perspectives on, you know, how government should be ran and policy, um, together will make the best output, uh, for Prince George's County. Um, so I humbly, uh, submit my candidacy, uh, for vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Kenneth Harris.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for the nomination and the confidence to potentially serve as the vice chair for the Prince George County Board of Education. Um, since my time of being elected on the board, I've served in the capacity of, um, chair and vice chair of the OBAF Committee as well as the Chair of the Climate Change Action Plan Implementation Committee. Um, I've had the wonderful opportunity to work with a good number of my colleagues. Um, and not just that, but also the chiefs within the Prince George County School System. I continue to want to prioritize the education future of our students, not only when they are within our care, but what happens once they leave our care. I feel as though this board truly does need unity to continue to move forward and make the best decisions that are possible for Prince George's County. And I believe that my history on the board shows, um, collaboration and shows, uh, that we, as a unit, as, uh, as, uh, a board that can collaborate in good spirits and understanding one another, can continue to move systems forward in the best way possible. Awesome.
Thank you so much, um, Dr. Harris, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your speeches. The body will, before we move forward, Mr. Murray, if you would please turn on your camera per the Internet rules. Thank you so much.
I, I wish I could, Madam Chair, I'm in train. Thank you.
Okay. The body will vote by roll call, whereby, when your name is called, state the name of the nominee of choice with your corresponding "yay". This is the same method as voted on in the July first meeting. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you would please call the roll. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Dr. Harris.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller.
Ms. Harris, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Django.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Ms. Walker.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
She, Madam Chair, you have five votes for Kenneth Harris and five votes for Brandon Jackson.
Thank you so much. Um, if you would please call the roll one more time, thank you.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Um, Brandon Jackson, aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Dr. Harris.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Dr. Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller.
Dr. Brandon, Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller, could you repeat your vote, please?
Dr. Harris, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Django.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
Ms. Walker.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
There are five votes for Dr. Kenneth Harris and five votes for Brandon Jackson.
Thank you so much. Just give me one minute, please. Um, colleagues, as we did on the first meeting, we've reached our second time where we have a stalemate. And so I'm gonna give you a couple of options with the goal to progress us into a vice chair role tonight. There's several options that are available, so please listen to each option carefully as we will have a vote on the options. There are three options tonight. Yes, sir, Mr. Swift.
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, one of the options just went away. Reconsider the vote on the motion because that was on the original vote, not this vote.
Thank you so much. Um, so we will have two options tonight. And our, in the, um, chair will read each option, and in conclusion, a board will vote individually per option. If one option receives a vote of six or higher, we will choose the highest vote of the majority at the conclusion of the individual votes, just as we did last time. The chair will read these options aloud. The first option is to fix the time to which to adjourn to reconvene prior to August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the next business board meeting. Tonight, we will not fix the time in advance. If this gets the most votes, then we will come back in a sign of time. Option two, the second option is to adjourn the meeting and continue the procedure at the August twenty-ninth meeting. Those are our two options. I will read those once more, and then we will go individually. The first option is to fix the time to which to adjourn to reconvene prior to August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the next board business meeting. And option two is, the second option is to adjourn the meeting and continue the procedure at the August twenty-ninth meeting. Ms. Adam Stafford.
Can there be a third option to vote again?
Mr. Swift, we just had a five and five vote.
Yeah, that, that's the, uh, third option, which is nothing to vote on. If you don't adopt either, either of these two, you just keep voting.
So if you vote both of these down and not a majority votes for it, then we will, um, have to do it again. Does that ma-, um, does that answer your question, um, Ms. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Thank you. We will begin the vote. Um, Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you would take the votes, the first option is to fix the time and con- and continue this procedure. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
And just want to clarify, this is to continue, correct?
No. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
This one is to fix the time to come back later.
Before the August twenty-ninth meeting.
No.
Could you repeat your vote, Mr. Briggs?
No.
Dr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
So.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
No.
Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller.
This is to fix. Can you read that, um, motion we're voting on?
It's to fix the vote to come back before the, the August twenty-ninth meeting. Say it one more time, please. Oh, she said no.
I thought, no.
Mr. Murray.
No.
Mr. Django.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
No.
There are four first votes in affirmative, five votes in the negative, and one abstention.
Thank you. Ms. Adam Stafford, Mr. Jackson, both of your cameras are off. Mr. Harris, um, per our Internet rules. Are you all unable to join us for any reason?
No, sorry, I hit the button on X.
No worries. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Mr. Jackson, are you unable to join us at this time? Thank you so much. Um, we will move on to option two. The second option is to adjourn the meeting and continue the procedure at our August twenty-ninth meeting. Um, the last time I did mention it, I was gonna try to change it to August twenty-second, but we are gonna keep it on the twenty-ninth. So that, uh, motion again is to, um, the second option is to adjourn the meeting tonight and continue the procedure at the August twenty-ninth meeting. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you can please take the roll. Thank you.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
No.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
No.
Mr. Briggs.
No.
Dr. Harris.
No.
Mr. Jackson.
No.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Murray.
No.
Mr. Django.
No.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
There are three first votes in the affirmative and seven votes in the negative.
Thank you. With these votes, um, we will not vote. We will not move to the August twenty-ninth because that was, um, voted in the negative. And, um, we also, uh, were not successful with six votes for the original vote, which was the option one, which was to fix the date, so we will proceed with voting again. Mr. Swift, is that correct per the procedure?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Mr. Fitzpatrick, we will be, um, one second. What we are voting on is on, um, our two candidates, please. Please call them.
This is Adam Stafford.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Dr. Harris.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Dr. Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Dr. Miller, could you please repeat your vote?
Harris, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Django.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Ms. Walker.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
There are five votes for Dr. Harris and five votes for Mr. Jackson.
Colleagues, we will do this one more time, and then we will go to the options. We would have voted on this four times with the same five and five, and so we will do it, um, for our fourth round. Um, will you please call the roll? Thank you so much, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Dr. Harris.
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Brandon Jackson.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Dr. Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller.
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Murray.
Brandon Jackson.
Mr. Django.
Kenneth Harris.
Ms. Walker.
Dr. Kenneth Harris.
There are five votes for Dr. Harris, five votes for Mr. Jackson.
Thank you so much. We will begin our votes now for, um, the first option is to fix the votes for a time that is before August twenty-ninth meeting. Thank you so much, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Uh, no.
Dr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
No.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
No.
Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller.
No.
Mr. Murray.
No.
Mr. Django.
No.
Ms. Walker.
No.
There are two votes in affirmative, seven votes in the negative, and one abstention.
Thank you so much. Um, the next vote, the next option for the vote will be to, um, adjourn this meeting tonight and continue the procedure at the August twenty-ninth meeting. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
No.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
No.
Mr. Briggs.
No.
Dr. Harris.
Aye.
Dr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
No.
Mrs. LaSalle Frazier.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah.
Mr. Murray.
No.
Mr. Django.
Um, can you please repeat what we're, um?
Sure. Um, Ms. Adam Stafford, if you can go on mute, um, please. And the second option, Mr. Django, was to adjourn the meeting tonight and continue this procedure at our next board meeting, which is August twenty-ninth.
Oh, so we're voting to, um, to keep doing it tonight?
No, this one would be to actually adjourn tonight, be finished, and then vote on August twenty-ninth when we have our regular board meeting.
Oh, okay, no.
Ms. Walker.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you call? Yes.
There are three votes in the affirmative and seven votes in the negative.
Dr. Miller. Did you have your hand up or you didn't mean to?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. Colleagues, we find ourselves at a position where we have five votes for a candidate and five votes for another candidate. We also find ourselves at, um, voting to fix the votes, no, and voting to, um, adjourn so that we can have a future vote as a no, which means we will continue this vote tonight. Mr., uh, Ms. Zapor Miller, did you mean to have your hand up?
Now I do, sorry.
Okay, it's not a problem at all.
I apologize. Uh, no, this time I didn't mean to have my hand up. Um, quick question, uh, where we are, I know that we are not in a room that we can, I don't know whether there's an option to convene or we just continue voting.
Convene as a, you mean, in a private session?
Yeah.
No. Uh, Mr. Parliamentarian, if you can confirm that that is not an option?
I'm not sure what she wants to do.
I, I think I know what she's trying to do.
Just one second, Ms. Adam Stafford, please, if you could. Um, Mr. Swift, what she would like to do is to have us to move to an executive session, a private session, and then come back after we've had an opportunity to convene as a small group. and then come back after we've had an opportunity to convene as a small group.
I would say no because it would interfere with voting. Once you've started voting, there shouldn't be anything to interfere with it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Did that answer your question, Dr. Miller?
It did answer my question. Thank you.
Okay, and before Board Member Adam Stafford goes, I do have just a question, Mr. Parliamentarian, please. As the Chair, can I ask for a recess?
Well, without objection, well, it takes a vote of six, but without objection, you know, take a 10-minute recess or 15-minute recess. If anybody objects, then you state the motion and take the vote.
And the recess is just a pause right here, still being inside of the session, or is a recess with cameras off?
Uh, you, do you want to recess or stand at, stand at ease?
No, I want to disregard my question. Let's, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Ms. Adam Stafford, you got a question?
Yes, can we, could we move to suspend voting and suspend Robert's Rules of Order so we can go into an executive session so we can talk amongst ourselves and come back and vote because clearly we all want to resolve this now.
Mr. Parliamentarian? I, I think he answered that in the, in the last session. It will interfere with the, it will interfere with the vote. We're in the middle of voting at this particular time, and it interferes with our voting process. I agree we want to solve this now.
I guess my question is just can we suspend, can we suspend voting? I know you can suspend parliamentary procedure. I mean, if the majority of us don't want to reschedule this, if the majority of us want to suspend the voting so that we can have a sidebar as a group and, and solve this collectively so we can come as a consensus and move forward. I mean, what, what are our options?
We have an option, which is to come back on August 29th. That is the second option, and we will have a recess. We will have that option for several days before August the 29th. Mr. Swift?
Madam Chair, what would be the specific reason for going into executive session? I mean, remember you have 15 options.
Ms. Adam Stafford, I think that was for you to help him, to help understand that, the body to understand your thoughts.
Let, let's just go ahead with the recess. I don't have the 15 reasons in front of me. I think that was directed for the Chair. I mean, you could say executive session for legal reasons. I mean, legally, you know, by the law, it says that we have to elect board leadership, so I mean, maybe you could use that one.
Yeah, I, I think we're poised to be able to, to vote. Mr. Swift? I don't have the 15 in front of me. He, I'm sure he's getting them now. And that's the same Dr. Miller was asking for. I recognize that.
Yeah, section 305, I think C of the Open Meetings Act, Close Sessions, the 15 Reasons, Discussing Employment, Employment Assignment, Promotion, Discipline, Demotion, Compensation, Removal, Resignation, Performance Evaluation of an Employee, et cetera, et cetera. Protect the Privacy or Reputation of an Individual with Respect to a Matter Not Related to Public Business. Consider the Acquisition of Real Property. Consider a Matter that Concerns a Proposal Business or Industrial Organization. Consider Investment in Public Funds, Marketing. Consult with Counsel, Consult with Staff, Consultants, and Other Individuals. Conduct Collective Bargaining, Discuss Public Security. The Deployment of Farm Police, and Development of Implementation of Emergencies, Prepare Minister Great. I'm just running through them because conduct, discuss investigative proceedings, comply with constitutional stuff, discuss before a contract, know disclose cybersecurity. I, I don't see any reason that, that would fit in.
Thank you so much for your Parliamentarian guidance. Ms. Adam Stafford, did that answer your question sufficiently?
He said he doesn't see any reason why we, we could or could not.
No, he ran through the 15, he read them out loud, the 15, and he's saying that the, the rationale being given doesn't fit into one of the 15. Is the guidance. I'm sorry, did you? He didn't say, he can't say we cannot. He can't say we cannot. What he's saying is based on his Parliamentarian guidance, that, that is what he interprets from the Parliamentarian guidance. If she wanted to, can she make a motion? Can she make a motion that we do this, and then if we get six, we just move forward with that?
Again, I'm confused.
Just let's go ahead with the recess. Let's go ahead with the recess 10 minutes.
Yeah. I'm fine to take a five-minute recess, without objection, a five-minute recess, and we will be immediately back with it's 8:08. So 8:13, we'll restart. Thank you, Mr. Swift. Thank you so much for that five-minute recess, colleagues. Per the Internet rules, if you will, please turn on your cameras so we can proceed. Thank you so much, Dr. Harris, Dr. Miller. And Dr. Miller, are you able to turn on your phone per our Internet rules? Thank you so much. Colleagues, we are back to vote, so thank you. We will vote for our two candidates. If you will please call the roll.
Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Adam Stafford? Ms. Boozer Schruthen?
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Dr. Harris?
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson? Mrs. LaSalle Frazier?
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Dr. Miller?
Kenneth Harris, aye.
Mr. Murray?
One of the, did, did we do a, like a form that we restarted? It was unclear if folks know if we can get us restarted.
Yes, we made the announcement that we were restarting at 8:13 PM.
Mr. Parliamentarian, do we have to, to re-vote since we left and came back?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is if a roll call would be appropriate since we left and came back, and there's clearly not the same people that were here just a moment ago.
We have a quorum to begin. We need six people to begin, and so we began our meeting.
And my question to the Parliamentarian was if we needed a roll call to start the meeting.
The Chair recognizes the Parliamentarian, and I appreciate that. So, Mr. Parliamentarian?
No, we do not.
Was your question answer satisfactory, Mr. Murray?
Thank you, yes.
Absolutely. Thank you. No problem. We were continuing to vote. Do you know where you are, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Murray?
Brandon Jackson?
Mr. Django?
Dr. Kenneth Harris?
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Brandon Jackson, aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Brandon Jackson.
Ms. Walker?
Dr. Kenneth Harris, aye.
There are six votes for Dr. Harris, four votes for Mr. Jackson.
Thank you so much for that. Dr. Kenneth Harris, congratulations on becoming our Vice Chair for the Board of Education until December 2nd, 2024. Colleagues, thank you so much for this meeting tonight. It is 8:17 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. We will meet, and we will meet on our regularly scheduled meeting, which is August the 29th. Thank you. Have a great night. Ms. Barton, will you please stop the recording?